I'm gonna call the workshop from the City of Vernon to Oregon, September twenty-two. And for the dedication, here is all the things from out of the field and I think they just got us in residence as we go back to business. And then the city's business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being and everything.
Which one y'all love?
That would be weak.
So, uh, the trial balance that Michelle's got there with this fine print, uh, that's what I was basing the audit, I mean, the, uh, budget off of was that's the audited trial balance. So, you know, I would say, uh, those are better numbers to go off of than what we had, uh, on the original budget. But then there were not many adjustments at all from the original budget. You know, we're trying to find just a baseline with that, you know, really cover overhead, maybe have a little bit of cushion for some, for some, uh, repairs and maintenance and equipment to be purchased. And, and, uh, looking back through the GL, it looks like a lot of repairs and maintenance and equipment were purchased in this, in this year that we're about to wrap up. You know, the, the fire department said they needed some more equipment where I saw that, you know, we bought four new suits in, in November of last year. Uh, we've bought a lot of football and baseball softball equipment, you know, during the year. So I didn't leave a lot of cushion, but some, uh, there. Um, so I would think that a good goal for us to be, what would be to add some of those assets on the wish list or repairs and maintenance are on that wish list that we got from the different departments, uh, and add those items to the current budget. Uh, you know, of course, we'll have a, I hate to say a shortfall, but in this next period, we would have a shortfall, but we're going to use those funds that we have in excess now. Um, and that's, that's why I printed the, the current cash position, you know, from First Federal and, uh, also the, the, uh, regions account. So we'll, we'll know where we stand, you know, because we do have a lot of cushion there to, to buy some assets. Uh, you know, in, in March, I believe of twenty-one, a brush truck was approved, you know, for sixty thousand. I, I don't know if a quote was gotten then, or if, if that quote would even still be active. Or, so we might need to check on that, that might be our number, sir?
How much was it for?
It was for sixty then.
It never got ordered.
But with, with inflation, that might be seventy-five or eighty now. So it's, um, you know, might need to see what, what is needed.
The actual price of it.
Right. And since it has been so long, you know, is, is that something that we could table and possibly discuss trying to attain through a grant? Instead of using the excess funds that are on hand now, just something to think about. I don't know if you guys have any questions about that, that list. Uh, I'm, I did not get it compiled until about Friday afternoon, so I'm sorry you guys are just now seeing it. So I, I think the hard request for, for a tractor?
Yeah.
For, for street and, and water? Okay, for fifteen thousand dollars?
If we can.
Okay. And then also the brush truck, I think those were some pretty hard requests and then-
Yeah, Shaq would really, really like to have that brush truck.
Yeah.
Um- I didn't know if we could with mine, but, but, so I just figured if we could.
Uh, and then also there was a lawnmower for nine thousand dollars. We had a quote from Lanes on that.
Is that for the rec?
Rec.
For rec, yeah. Uh, and then also the scoreboard for, for eighty-four hundred, I think that one's already been-
That was a quote.
A quote?
Yeah, that was a bit better. Um, Tim mentioned the lawnmower and also a mule. I'm not sure exactly what that is, that he's been trying to get. And then I think Shaq also had on his wish list lawnmower, weed eater, equipment, and they didn't keep orion.
Right.
Separately.
But Jason, then you said we were not gonna get one of these specimen for them, they was gonna use-
They, they've been using my stuff.
Just gonna use-
The fire department's got one of my weed eaters, Rick's got my weed eater and a mower, one of the old mowers, but, but they still use my new, my new stuff.
But that could be shared, I think.
Well, i- if you, if you bought a new one for the rec, then the fire department possibly could-
They could, yeah.
Take the-
They could share, or they could take that old one.
Yeah.
And it's still, it mows, I mean, it's just old.
Cause they don't use it that much.
Yeah.
They use it not that much at all. I think he just made when he thought, you know, what he was wanting.
Right.
To keep you to be at the coldest-
Right.
Where you're supposed to be, that's why he made that decision.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So it just wasn't a lot for us to go off of, because it was just a, a list of items, so.
Yeah.
But I think for the, uh, water and street, you know, we had some, some good numbers there and also rec on, on a few items, so. And then Ms. Becky said that we had a, had already promised out two cameras for the Washington County Sheriff's Office?
Yeah, she had five hundred dollars basically a year each year, so that-
How many?
Twenty-five, yeah, a P two. Also, um, let me throw this in, I spoke, had spoken with, uh, Jesse who I worked with last year with Power Tech. I think we've got like eighteen-five to the budget for the Fourth of July.
That's right.
Okay. Last year the fireworks were sixteen-five, he was supposed to have sent me out an actual, um, email quote today, but I have not received that yet. But I'm sure I'll get it this week, but he said that it was going up this year ten percent, which I figured it was gonna be the one fifteen or twenty, so. As far as the fireworks show, that's not bad.
No.
Cause I thought that it was gonna go up more.
Okay.
Everyone wants for one of twenty percent, but he said it was ten.
Okay, so on the, uh, Fourth of July, it's going up ten percent?
That's for the fireworks.
Fireworks, okay. I think the actual fireworks, it was seventeen-five last year. It was sixteen-five with that, okay. Okay, so I'll make sure-
We've been over in other areas, but that's what I'm saying, he said it was gonna go, and what I asked for was about the same as we had last year, it's about the power and, and all that.
Okay, now total spent last year, uh, on, on the, uh, Fourth of July was about eighteen total.
Yeah.
So would you say twenty to account for, okay. So I'll, I'll make that a-
Stuff with the, wasn't the fireworks, that was the rest of the stuff that we did.
Yeah, so I was, I was saying if we spent eight-
If you went twenty, that probably would be about on the mark.
It probably, okay. So we'll say twenty on that.
Cause we did, uh, discuss that we, how we had to do it, we were gonna have to bounce me out.
And stuff like that, because we had had it this year.
Okay.
Things for the kids, so it was going to-
And we want concession open this year.
Okay, and then-
One night, it's out of rec.
Uh, we have a twelve hundred down for the bounce house for, for the, it's, it's included.
Oh, it's included?
Okay.
Okay, great.
And, and, uh, a- a- as we're going along, I am making notes and adjustments on here, so you will have the live, live update. Okay, and you're gonna have concessions open during Fourth of July?
That's what we all agree on, yeah. Normally we do that and we did business, but last year they did, they only sold water out of concession.
Okay.
And so we, basically, I think it was four hundred dollars turned in after the Fourth of July.
Okay.
We went and we went in that.
We should have made, made more to go back towards this year.
Okay, so I'll add a line for, uh, Fourth of July concessions?
Yeah, and all that, cause we had a rec, um, Lee, Jason, your, uh, brush truck money, I've got some bad news for you.
Comes out of your CARES Act, right?
Well, now the CARES Act money, we turned around and used some of it towards, uh, sub grants, right? Okay.
Yep, thirty thousand roughly.
Thirty thousand, sixty-four dollars and sixty cents.
Okay.
Thirty-one, five forty-two was approved for-
Business grants.
Business grants.
Okay.
I think it was nine, but then they also approved the brush truck, and it was at twenty-nine-eight, so I don't know if that number's off, but. We all grouped it twenty-nine-eight out here or something.
Okay, so we have twenty-nine-eight allocated towards the brush truck right now. Is that what we're saying?
I think that's what they counsel approved.
Okay.
I was told by a previous clerk that we could save money, it was an account somewhere.
It's, it's in the general fund?
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, the ARPA funds have been sent, removed from the general fund and put into an interest-bearing account for rec.
Was, was that in the, in First Federal? Or was it in?
I don't have any idea, I'm just being honest.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
I was just trying to think, I know that.
I know that it was got paid accounts.
I'm not sure if it, it may very well possibly be First Federal or First Federal, but I know that-
Talking about whom and everything.
Well, initially, the ARPA came in, were done a lot of the CARES money, apparently it was found that they would also put into the general fund.
Right.
Which they should have been in the interest-bearing account the whole time, that's what they switched, and I do believe that it's First Federal, because I think they haven't gone to Federal.
Okay. Um, u- under our online banking profile, those, those accounts here, you know, that, that's what was shown at First Federal. Um, I, I did not see the interest-bearing account, but, um, I can go back there and see if we got some more statements and see what's in the, in the ARPA account.
This, this is all that you could see signed in?
Yeah.
It was supposed to have been, uh, and we were told it was there.
I'm not sure how it pays nicely, but, uh, I had seen it pull up with more accounts.
Okay.
There may be another way to-
Okay.
Settings may be different than when I seen it pulled up with the more accounts.
Yeah.
And I noticed that because my computer looked like this, and the other computer has had more accounts listed, and you pulled it up over there.
Okay. Okay.
That may be where it's at.
No, that's a screenshot of the, um, online banking, pretty much, when you pull it, when you go to our dashboard on First Federal. But I have seen it have more different accounts listed on it than that.
And we have, I can't believe it as well, we do-
We have two accounts, the regions that I know about-
Right.
That we use, which is capital improvement, which is having these, that's what goes in there, I don't know where it goes after that. And then the security deposit account, when people, you know, turn on their services, that account is a region.
There's more than those two accounts.
I think there is, but I, they're not like accounts I use.
What, there's a, looks like two CDs, the regions, one, it's, it's included on that screenshot, uh, with ten thousand, five hundred, another one thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, I'm thinking these two checking accounts are the, are probably the capital, uh-
They are.
Improvement and the security.
They are.
And that thirty thousand CD that you're talking about, we discussed that last year, especially that was the week that's when we found that.
Found that, that's them.
And it's basically sitting there not paying any more money, and I thought that we were better to use it in last year's budget, but apparently that wasn't done.
We never did, no.
Okay.
Cause it's not making any money, no?
No, it's, 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 it's whatever.
Okay.
So it, I mean, I remember the discussions on it, and that's finding it at the bank and agreeing at budget time to use that-
Okay.
Along with part of the ARPA for last year's budget, so why, apparently that wasn't enough, and then it's still there.
Would you want to use those funds to buy the tractor? Or the, I guess it, it would make a difference in the brush truck?
I was gonna say, or the other half of the brush truck.
I don't know what you have to do.
I, I pulled that out of my memory, I could have been wrong.
That makes a familiar number, but I can't place it.
I know that this was discussed earlier this year, and I feel like I was at that meeting, and then there was like research afterwards, because it was like, where's the brush truck? And then it was discovered that it never got ordered, and, you know, we didn't have a order placed there. I was trying to throw something together kind of from memory and kind of last minute, so I was like, I think this is how much it's supposed to be.
It was coming from somewhere else, the brush truck wasn't in the same place mine was. I think they had found it somewhere else, I don't know where.
No, initially, I think it was a, I think two city trucks.
Yeah, two city trucks and a brush truck, and then we ended up with one.
And we were supposed to order a brush truck at the same time.
Yes.
Within three months, that truck-
Right.
That we have now, and-
The brush truck never got ordered.
It never got ordered, although, we've discussed that before, it, it never got ordered. So the money's been sitting.
Okay, so are we gonna get a fresh quote on the brush truck?
Yes. I don't really know how to do that, but I'll figure it out.
Okay.
So right now that thirty thousand dollar CD, if it wasn't used in last year's budget, we, we could change how that we need to use that this time.
For a shortfall?
Sorry?
Uh-
Yeah, on the shortfall, yes, ma'am. So, uh, should we go ahead and add an, an amount to the budget for the brush truck? I, I would say if we're going to adopt it and we're gonna purchase one, we probably should go ahead and add-
Not the sixty?
Sixty-five.
What was it?
Sixty was the-
That was the two trucks.
Sixty was?
Okay, well, maybe that's why I remembered that number, maybe it is-
It was around sixty, cause it was one of us-
It was around sixty for the two trucks.
Well, that's the two.
For, for two?
Yeah.
Okay. So call it thirty-five for, for the one truck?
That's what I was, I was going for, thirty-five, because from twenty-nine to thirty-five, with inflation, it probably is thirty-five now. It should be on the safe side and-
It should give a decent amount.
With that?
Yeah. Jason, what you put in?
Huh?
He, he wants a tractor.
He just wants a tractor.
That's it, that's all we asked for.
You get a tractor.
You give up on your second.
I give up on it, if I can get a tractor, I'll be happy.
One question. That is gonna be a second vehicle.
One question. The city on the trailer?
Huh?
The city on the trailer? We have a trailer. And they work the truck.
How do y'all haul lamps and all? Just say if I see you doing trucks, pick up lamps.
We have a dump trailer.
Dump trailer.
Dump trailer?
We have a dump trailer.
Dump trailer working?
Yes.
They did a ham or something, haul more, something like that.
No.
That's what I'm saying, I'd have one more, so.
Y'all need a trailer, man, I see.
That's why I was like, we, I get fifteen thousand, I find a tractor, cheap. I don't get, not a big one, just a small one, and then I get a trailer too.
What kind of tractor you looking for?
Whatever I get. That, that big one we got is useless.
Yeah, but you need to get rid of that thing, you're gonna put that one toward it.
What's y'all, what do you got, a tractor? I can tell you what one's called. Fifteen?
Fifteen? You can get it for that. Next by used tractor, you get a thirty, in the thirty-horse range, that's an average size truck with bucket on, like, city don't need to get one of those. Then you level dirt, push dirt, whatever you want to do, but you looking at like twenty-four, four thousand. But the thing is, now, the city can buy it, but he can pay for a tractor.
Yeah.
Three fifty, four fifty a month.
Yeah.
It's sixty. But the problem, that's why I asked you, y'all driving them lawnmowers all over, all over the hall, you know?
Yeah, can't, can't you get one of them little combinations where you can get a tractor and a trailer?
Yeah.
Use, use that trailer, pull lawnmowers in?
That's what you need to do, just get a package, you see?
That's what I was thinking about, you know?
No interest at sixty months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no interest, sixty months, you get the package deal.
And we get the trailer, and then we can use it for lawnmower and everything, I mean.
Chase, have you, why don't you try that tractor out of mine, see if it's too big or too little?
That one you got is perfect.
What?
Well, like the one, like the one Danny had, when the storm hit, when Michael hit, that, that thing, it worked circles around ours.
What you?
I can't remember how much it was, but it made a lot of payments, it paid a good, good thing.
So, so you, you could get a thirty thousand dollar tractor and pay five hundred a month for sixty months, and only have a six thousand dollar impact on the budget this year. But then for, for thirty grand, you probably could get a combo with a trailer, could you, do you think so?
You get it all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all so, I think you could put it up, but if you have a storm, that gravel bucket is-
That's what I want, that's what, that's what Danny had, he had that gravel on there. And it worked wonders.
Well, then you can always, I mean, I can tie, that I hit, I mean.
With, with that, that attachment?
Yeah, I got a box plate already up there.
Well, that, that one attachment could be thirty-five hundred to five thousand dollars, though, I mean, would you wanna, if, if, if you're gonna finance it, would you wanna go ahead and spend more?
Yeah.
And to make sure you got a, a few implements?
It's cheaper when you get it all, yeah, package deal, that's like a bucket, you put a bucket on a tractor, five plus, five thousand, and you add one to it.
Okay.
Cause they need a gravel.
So how much you want to budget for it? Forty?
Man, you need a bush hog, or where you gonna put mine? Come over here.
I mean, I got one, but it ain't worth it.
It ain't showing you no good, it's a nice little, it's a big one.
You buy something like a brandy? I think you can buy them deals now, where they got the bush hog and the box plate with it, or you get either the bush hog with it.
With all the things you need, Jason, for that tractor?
Just, you grab one, the bush hog.
The whole thing, how much would it be? You got all their tech, if you got, that's most likely if you buy something for your houses, that'll be on your attachment. Attachment.
Well, that's something like that, though, generally you're gonna get one, and that's paper, the other.
Yeah.
I know that's what it is on the skid stairs, that's what it is on ours, but, but they can be, I mean. Go back to next year and buy something else if you need something.
They'll, they'll put all that equipment in a package deal there.
I'd say forty grand, you get a trailer, box plate, bush hog, and all the tractor. Well, it just depends on what size, you, you stay in thirty grand, you gonna get it for forty thousand.
Yeah.
See, I, mine's fifty-one horse, I didn't pay thirty-seven thousand for mine.
Yeah.
Now, that's been ten years ago.
Yeah.
But I got a box plate in the old mine, I don't know if you, it hasn't been used two times, my box plate.
Yeah, Sam, we got one there, I mean, we don't wanna use it.
Okay, well, if you did a forty thousand dollars, it's five years, it don't have an eight thousand dollar effect on your budget this year.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Y'all, y'all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, is that gonna go under street, water?
Uh, probably go under street, yeah, I'd put it under street.
Okay. Okay, so we've added a thirty-five thousand dollar truck, and we've added an eight, eight thousand dollar payment for the tractor, so that has our deficit, the general fund is seventy thousand at the moment.
Is that with the thirty thousand, eight ninety-one CD?
So, no, so that, that, that's just in, in twenty-two to twenty-three in, in income and expense. So, you know, we would use about seventy thousand of, of, of our retained earnings to, to make up for it. So that, that's, that's before the CD?
Okay, that, that's, I'm just trying to work that out. That's mine, that's correct.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the next item would be the lawnmower, are we gonna say, since that has a bush hog or a finishing mower, that, that would account for, are we gonna get a lawnmower too?
I think you can get it with a rock mower, it's got all that back here.
With, with the bush hog? Okay. Okay, so-
He'll, he'll have a lot of street mode, for that lawn mower.
Yeah.
And all this field.
We're not doing seventy-nine right anymore, so it's gonna make it a little, it'll make it a lot easier on us too, so we'll get a lot more done.
Okay, so we'll take that off the list. Uh, now the scoreboard.
The what?
The, uh, scoreboard for the rec department.
We just discussed that the other time, you know, something else for the scoreboard, it's, what was it, there's something else?
There was two invoices that we, for simply already had, and then there was the quote for the-
I thought there was something else, I think that's-
Um, you're probably thinking about the quote that I was, that through the internet at the fire station that Shaq called me about, that I didn't have, that I didn't get.
Like two seventy-five, I think I figured, yeah, two seventy, yeah.
He, he didn't realize I didn't have access, cause the email he was sending it to at that time.
Yeah.
I was thinking he had something else that he was wanting.
Tim? Well, he has a scoreboard down for what?
I think it was about so grand.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars deep, I think.
Well, eight thousand, I guess that's the two.
Was it? Okay, who wanted to begate her?
The what?
Oh, well, rec and-
Fire department.
Rec.
Or?
No, fire department.
They need one.
It was a rec and, and the street. It was for the, it was for the recreation department and Jason.
For the metering and-
Metering.
I brought it up to Jason, reading meters and all, in and out of that truck, wearing that seatbelt. You think if the times they do within that truck, wearing that seatbelt?
That bus, the truck is running, you know, whether they had that, it would be much cheaper on you.
Yeah, gas too.
Gas.
I think somebody asked about it.
It was, it was the rec department, because they wanted to use it to get up trash, at defense, and then it was street, that's what it was.
Okay.
These are the departments, uh, they need one, just, uh-
Get, get rec bar.
And let rec bar, cause the rec don't have a, certain events, they can bar, but Jason, I need one to-
That's what I'm saying, if we're gonna buy one, I'd say, that's, well, we'd just get one from them.
Yeah, that's, that's a big, yeah, then let rec can get bar.
Cause they don't have any fence all the time.
No, no, so you sit down to Jason, and we use it every day, picking up trash and all.
Price for two scoreboards is eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, sixty-three cents, for two.
Have we voted on it? Did we vote on it?
No.
No.
I mean, is that something that we just, uh, have?
Yeah, it's good.
I, I mean-
It's been out like a year.
Huh?
It's been, yes.
That's what I'm saying, I can see where, definitely that's a good area. I mean, it's something that we could do it on this year.
Why didn't you say just two?
Yeah, but I'm saying if we, if we have a-
Fifty-four, sixteen thousand.
If we have a bucket bomb, we have one, that's not something that we have, you know? That's a number.
You kinda say one.
Me, yes.
We have.
Y'all talk about getting the same, you're talking about the-
The scoreboards.
Yeah.
Are any of them out there?
No, they ain't, they were.
They never worked in the last ten years.
They were from seeing it out of them.
And obviously they get any fix, or somebody would take them out.
Yeah.
I think, I think Brian looked down on one time, and they were shot, if I remember.
You said they were a piece?
Eight thousand for two.
Yeah.
You get four, it'd be sixteen thousand.
I mean, it'd be nice with the whole tournament, you can get affordable signs, unless the league has changed the rules. Last time I was out there in the Hill Tournament, we got little flag markers. Last time I was out there in the hill tournament, we got little flag markers, but with the incomes, something like that. A lot of cities that have tournaments can't afford stuff like that.
Probably take you two or three tournaments to build up for it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
It'd be nice.
It'd be nice, but. There aren't even any tournaments really happening out there even.
That's what I'm saying, it's not, it's, it may, it's, I don't know, it is going on out there, because the little, things like the football is doing that.
But, but, uh, they, they use.
The high school.
The high school.
The high school, but they're full of players.
Okay.
I was looking.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, but if we haven't budgeted, that's not something that we.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to ask me.
So, yeah, I mean, I.
That's me.
Okay, pass on that.
Fundraising for ours, or something like that.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, it's all, everything I need, the scoreboards, everything. Yeah, there's other things up, isn't it?
I think you need one of them scoreboards.
Okay, now, are, are, are we gonna budget for a side-by-side and mule? Budget for that, okay, how much?
I don't wanna get a cow, but.
How about Jimmy?
What? My cabota.
A gator.
How much, my cabota?
Gas or diesel?
What are they running you?
Gas or diesel?
About fifteen.
You can get a gas roof for it.
About fifteen.
Push some twenty for it.
So, fifteen?
That's what I paid for my cabota, fifteen.
I got a pile of yours.
It's seven years old, eighteen, one oughta give twenty, you should know, cheaply, I know the guy, what's the get a cow?
I don't know.
I got a nine, two thousand nine Polaris.
I'm a, yeah.
Okay, well.
About fifteen thousand, you can get, you may not get a cabota, but you'll get something.
I would go with twenty.
Okay.
And then we could do the finance program, good like you did on the tractor.
Right, and I, I bet if you bought the tractor and implements and side-by-side from the same place, you'll get a deal.
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
So, okay. All right, so, but, a lot, twenty for the side-by-side, okay.
I gotta be in there.
He got another D. Man, go to D.
No.
It's okay, Gary, I'm hungry too.
We'll, uh, try and keep it moving so we can go to the sucker.
Cause she's gotta go, you okay, push it. So, we just going to get the lawnmower for rec or not?
Okay.
Well, we, we didn't finish discussing.
Didn't you say you had one, Jason, they could use, that they could keep?
If, 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 we bought, just did one, right?
Yeah, I think what they said was if they get the right, um, attachment for the tractor, then they don't need their mower as much, and then they can pass it on to others.
They could use them.
There you go.
He could use that, so, take it on.
Okay, so the side-by-side will have an effect of four thousand dollars on the current budget if you finance it over, over five years, okay? And then on the. We decided to put the tractor on the street at five years, so it's eight, so it's an effect of twelve in the current year budget. Okay, so currently we'd have a, a shortfall, you know, to be made up by our excess funds, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars right now, so. But, I mean, the, the money is there to, uh.
Where are you using to fill that?
Well, you got two hundred and fifty in the general fund right now.
So, it's not really a shortfall.
Yeah, so you, you had a large excess last year, so, right, so, yeah, the, the technical term is shortfall, but, but you have so much in retained earnings to be used. Yeah, I hate using the term shortfall, because it seems like you're actually in the hole, but you're not in the hole, you know, but, right. Right, determine where we're gonna use, so, um, you know, and I would say, you know, some of these quotes that we decided we're gonna get, they might be more than what you thought, and you might back off. Also, the other things will come up, so probably about a wash of where we are right now is where it'll end up, I would think. Got that, uh, wishlist, and I had a lot of small items, but, you know, I, I tried to include anything that I had gotten, you know, because I didn't want someone to thought they were not shown in the meeting. Okay, and the, the two cameras for five thousand dollars, where are they coming out of? Is that general fund?
I was gonna say general fund, I guess that was, that's going for the Washington Sheriff's Office, it's two cameras here. We can't, it's gotta come out of there, it's not definitely.
That's what they, they budgeted for, otherwise.
Yeah, but get that this year. And then if we have to, for the other, that'd be a, for the other two.
Two.
Three each year, like that.
And, and, you know, we, we still should have some excess funds through the year. Um, I don't know if, if it might be something to maybe do some sub grants like you did with the CARES Act to help some of the small businesses, you know, that, because the, you having another increase in minimum wage here, first of October. You know, and then, you know, Chad was talking about how food prices are soaring, and he's trying to keep his the same, you know, we might need to look into some sub grants again to help some existing businesses and see what else we could do to bring some in. Um, because, you know, you are in a position to, even if you have to do some matching grants, you know, that, there are, there's some money there to, to do that. Well, uh, I can print it out and show you. There's like a bunch of seven hundred and fifty dollar tickets. Okay. Let me see if I can find it in that audit report, and I can show you real quick.
We have two actually working on money right now.
We have.
Can I print some radios?
Yeah.
We paid for those five radios.
Five radios.
And we agreed last year, when we were in the red, to use, um, and there again, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's still done, because the CD's still there. But when we had the, the problem with the budget last year, we used, the council agreed to, I wanna say fifty-three or sixty-three thousand dollars.
When you said.
To make up for our budget. But there again, um, we're finding out that the CD was not used in the budget last year, or it would show up on the account, and so I'm not sure if all of us would use. That's just what we agreed on, because when we started out, we were in the red.
No.
Maybe you.
We were hit, it's, it's, remember?
Well, when we actually got to the numbers, we were one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars out, and we had to make that, that was natural.
But in the beginning, we were.
In the red, not just a shortfall like you were talking about, but there again, um, when they look at the account, I can tell.
Rose, I don't have any wifi in here.
You go ahead and walk it back in there where you can get to it.
It's going in and out on that phone.
You're too far away from it.
But that's the only thing that I know that was dedicated to our, uh, was, but, but, I wanna say. The five radios.
Three, three radios and five pages.
Can you, how's that?
It was two, two of them, I thought we paid the five.
Might have.
I, I don't have a business line that says half five, I don't know.
Yeah, and then, soon as that, something came out of the CARES money, and I lost it.
You caught the CARES money, couldn't use it the whole time.
But that's why I'm surprised to see that this.
Too cheap, that's, that's the right answer.
I'm surprised to see that the CD is still here, so the art fund may, may be intact as well.
We need checks too.
Whenever we walk out, I need to print out the detail of where the CARES Act money went, that's for, for Gary.
So, you have a final number for me?
If, if, if everybody's good with where we are, I, I think so.
Everybody feeling okay, now, given this, can all be amended later, we just have to do something tonight.
Uh, I, I would insist that we, you know, every quarter at least, us, you know, we need to look at where we are with, with the budget and, and trending. Ma'am?
No, I'm saying to approve where we are with the donations.
Uh, I, I, I think we can, I, I, I think that there's good, safe numbers, um, you know, they're, they're based on prior year expenses, and also, you know, that's the audit report. You know, that, those numbers from the twenty-one year end, uh, you know, I, I try to look for things like insurance and utility increases and account for those, but I think it's a good number. I, I walked in, we can talk.
All right, we have to go bake the other ordinance, we'll be right back, well, nobody go nowhere, please.
I say, let, let everybody stop and work on the work.
Yeah.
I think we'll look at, let everybody stop.
Yeah.
Just like Taylor.
And it can almost be a business, if we have to. They, they really worked hard to get me to.
Yeah, we did.
Get us it for, for the deadline. We get it past nine. If you breathe. But they have, they really have, they, they worked really hard to get that.
Hard.
Not here, they didn't, y'all have what kind of time frame they're in, so, I'm very pleased with that.
And we see if we can get it settled.
And then just the budget stuff, so. And we're gonna close, once he's, they've gone, uh, the information, then we'll close this meeting and open the, the hearing and vote. Michelle, and those all go to, uh. We've not done that yet.
Hi, Michelle, you say you're gonna be there at six? You say you're gonna be there at six?
Yeah.
It's about twenty-five. About twenty minutes.
Michelle, when you say she had to get put out an order, she was talking about the resolution.
Yeah, so, it's, it's done except for that final side of the number.
Okay, so, we're, when we close this meeting afternoon, it'll just be a matter of rating, but, I, five, you know, five regulations?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Are you a fuck for cemetery or?
Uh-huh. Some of them, I'm sure, a lot of them, uh. Are also. But, but, there's, there's a map of it too. One, what's the?
We've talked about cemetery, been over.
Some people had, you know, five months.
Someone had called me, or Key, uh, and asked me about cemetery, somebody told me there's, uh, Sydney, yeah, I said, Sydney over there. I said, uh, anyway, he said years ago, uh, grave, I had one graves out there, I said, hey, y'all, I said, I'll be shocked if I watch the story. And he had marked them off graves, I said, you can get up and miss one, yeah, and I said, uh, and, um. You planted her, and y'all go out and root and whatever, and then she'll tell you, I said, it was a pea now, I said, uh, six children was a pea, but, I ain't heard that like, uh, excuse me.
Oh, while we're sitting here waiting too, um, I had a conversation, uh, with the governor, her wife. And the guys of, um, bench was discussed, and the water issue was discussed, and I said, it was the day after our meeting, um, I said, that's, we discussed that, that's gonna be digged. And I invited him to come talk to us, and he, we talked about it a few minutes, and then, um. Because of the way our meetings are handled, well, public meetings are held now, he would rather not, so I suggested that he contact the city attorney. Had talked with her, and then she could bring that, um, during one of her, her reports, he said that he would do that, he'd speak to the other landlord and do that, if he didn't want. To be at the public and, and all that, but he said that he would speak with the other landlord and see if they could come to some sort of agreement to bring, to talk.
You, you wanna, you wanna, you go buy a truck.
Other than cemetery.
I want to get my bigger now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just telling this way, and I went through there, there was a big truck.
I was gonna say, somebody had a.
Tree.
Off, when I pulled it.
He got to have her down.
Somebody, yeah, it's a big tree, I saw that.
Took a quarter, that's cold.
Really?
That's all the cold.
And I, I, I'll tell y'all too, that I saw the filter system over there at school, that, um, dang it. It, it's true, it's the.
What, that school?
The filter, the filter system that he had, he placed, um, the one he showed me, and I basically.
And the back one by her.
The one he showed me, he had just been replaced two weeks, and he's like, so, he, he was very nice and happy that something's coming down. So, he, he, he's very nice and happy that something's coming down.
You, you, you talked to him?
I did talk to him.
Yeah, cuz I, he, he said, I, somebody had come by, and I already told him, cuz I went up there to talk to him.
They opened the meeting, I asked him. It's, um, I said, I told him that you would be getting up with it.
Yeah.
He said, well, while you're here, let's show him one, so that one of the council members will know. The system, filter system is flat, and he, he knew, he said that he, he had done it quite for a while. And we took the seat of it. Just a year, at least.
It's been that way for a long time.
Yeah.
So all we got to do is, is resolut, we see a resolution, we're good to go. What are you asking?
Okay, wait a minute, which one of these are returns?
The, they're not... The millage. One eighty-eight.
No, I'm not talking about the reservation, I'm talking about the...
You don't have to worry about that.
They're not, or Michelle. You just tell them, you just read what's yellowed about.
Okay. I'll have to take that full time. They'll do. No, we're still waiting.
And I've got the copies of Michelle signed down here. So that you sign it up.
Be careful, thank you. So we're waiting on Lee to bring us back.
We don't, and Sarah will have to wait on Lee, his part, his presentation's over, he's getting something for Gary. I just mean, we have to vote these in, like, we can end with...
We have to close the budget workshop.
Yeah, we can end the workshop, unless Gary needs to wait for whatever he needs.
Are you, is it about the bid? The bid system that, um...
Yeah.
They got the money?
Yeah, I got it.
From... That one, that was care, that...
CARES Act money.
But it's not gonna change what's...
No.
On here.
But I, no, but I was gonna tell you, Mr. Gary, everybody that, everybody that flossed that grant, got that grant.
Okay, I just never find out what grant it was.
It was a, um, supplement, like a, a help for...
What?
The CARES money that we gave to all the businesses, every business, and church organization that flossed. Everybody got it, nobody was turning up. Well, this was that, that was the CARES.
She went for that, other bank account.
All right, does anybody else have anything on the budget workshop, or we all in agreement? With everything? Anybody, Jason, y'all need to add anything to it? Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee?
I'm good.
We're all good. I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, you're gonna get a workshop.
Thank you.
I'll say it.
Discussion, all in favor?
In, in one hour? That's pretty good, guys.
We're only six minutes off, and I was the reason that we were late to start with, so I paused up.
Well, at, at four thirty, I was still in there making copies.
Yeah, she was, she was getting me a latte.
At this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing, the special meeting for the City of Vernon.
Who?
September twenty-sixth, twenty, we do at five thirty-six P M. The reason for this meeting is to see our resolutions. This is the City of Vernon, the City Council. Okay. This, to fund the proposed budget, requires, requires four point nine, four four two mil, which is eleven point seven four percent. More than the current year roll back rate of four point four two four six. Purposes to maintain current services under the jurisdiction of the City of Vernon City Council. I'm gonna open the public hearing on that now, does anybody have any comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now our meeting is reopened. Okay, we need to adopt the final millage rates first, uh, do I have a motion? To adopt the final millage rate of four point nine, four four two for operating purposes of the City of Vernon for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, through twenty twenty-three by resolution twenty-two dash one eight seven.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-two dash one eight seven.
I'll say it. Discussion, all in favor? Resolution's been adopted. Okay, and then we need to adopt the final budget. Recommended somebody make a motion that we adopt the final city budget in the amount of four million, six hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents, net of transfers between funds. The City of Vernon for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash, twenty twenty-three by resolution twenty-two one eight seven, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-two dash one eighty-seven.
Second?
I'm closing.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Uh-huh. Motion carried.
That's all we have to do.
So, with that being said, this area of discussion. We have adopted and approved those which is twenty-two dash one eight six. Resolution twenty-two dash one eight seven, I have a motion to adjourn. Second, discussion, all in favor? Meeting ended.